Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Monday, January 26 City Commission Meeting. We'll call the meeting to order if we could stand and pledge allegiance to the flag, please.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Mr. Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Commissioner Baldini.
Here.
Commissioner Kimbensey.
Here.
Commissioner Connolly.
Here.
Commissioner Frazier.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Mayor Protem Campana.
Here.
And Mayor Coine.
Here.
Thank you. We're all present. Any agenda changes that anyone would like to make? Commissioner Kimbensey?
Could we please pull the LDFAs so we can have a discussion about that?
And that would be eight F, is that?
Yes. Thank you.
And I'll move that to number 10. Okay. Eight F is now number 10. Any other changes? Any other changes? Okay. Seeing none. I move -- there's a -- is there a move to approve the agenda? Excuse me. Commissioner Connolly?
I move to approve the agenda as changed.
Is there support? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The agenda is adopted as changed. Announcements? I don't have any announcements today. The first item on the agenda is a public hearing regarding the Community Development Block Grant Part II application for North Third Street Facade Improvement Project. At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak at the public hearing, please come forward and state your name, address, and the city or township in which you live. Please come to this microphone. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm sorry. Good evening. My name is Tara Los McKinnney. I am here on behalf of the Marquette Downtown Development Authority, and I am a resident of Marquette, the city. I'm here on behalf of the DDA to provide information and answer any questions with regards to the North Third Street Facade Grant Project. The DDA is pleased to partner with the MEDC, the city, and three distinct property owners to apply for grant funds and facilitate facade improvement projects. The three projects total $516,006, which includes CDBG grant funds of $228,750 and owner leverage of $287,256. The projects are 122 North Third Street and 118 West Bluff Street, 514 North Third Street, and 927 North Third Street. It is anticipated that a minimum of 12 jobs will be created as a result of this project. The improvements are consistent with recommendations in the Third Street Sustainability Plan in that they will create improved street appeal, provide for more visible business storefronts, will help strengthen and expand businesses, and will provide a positive effect on the entire Third Street corridor. The DDA submitted the Part I application on behalf of the city for a grant for facade improvements to the three properties on North Third Street, which the City Commission approved at their meeting on October 14, 2014. The environmental review record for each of the properties was also completed and advertised and available for public comment as required. The Michigan Economic Development Corporation, or MEDC, community assistance team reviewed the application and submitted a letter of interest and an invitation to file a Part II application. The next step is the submission of the Part II application and review and approval by the MEDC. We're excited about the opportunity to work with these private property owners who are willing to make the investment and improvements to their properties and create additional jobs in the district. Thank you to the City Commission for continuing to support our efforts to secure grant funds to help in continuing to facilitate improvements in the downtown district.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to come forward and speak? Okay. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Commissioners, the appropriate thing would be to make an emotion to adopt authorizing the resolution that we have before us. Is there -- anyone wishes to make a motion? What? I'm sorry. What? Mr. Keith, what? You're saying something. I can't hear you.
(inaudible)
Okay. We'd already heard it once last meeting, but why don't you go ahead and read it, then?
Thank you, Your Honor. Background. At its meeting on October 14, 2014, the City Commission approved the Downtown Development Authority's submission on behalf of the city of a Part I application for a Community Development Block Grant for facade improvement and job creation project for three buildings on North Third Street, 122 North Third slash 181 West Bluff, 514 North Third, and 927 North Third. By letter dated November 25, 2014, the MEDC invited the city to submit a Part II grant application for funding in the amount of $228,750. The required environmental review record has been completed and advertised on December 15, 2014. Additional requirements include a public hearing on the proposed project and the adoption of an authorizing resolution after completion of the public hearing. Fiscal effect none by this action. Recommendation: Conduct a public hearing to gather public input on the proposed North Third Street Facade Improvement Project and adopt the authorizing resolution after completion of the public hearing. Alternatives as determined by the Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I'm sorry for the oversight there. Thank you. Is there such a motion? Commissioner Baldini?
I will so move that the Market City Commission hereby authorizes submission of an application to Michigan Economic Development Corporation for funding of the North Third Street Facade Improvement Project based on job creation.
Is there support? Commissioner Campana?
Support.
Commissioner Baldini? Any comments?
I think we've seen all the documentation on it. It's very descriptive as to how much money and how much they're going to put in in the job creation, and I think it's a --
Commissioner Campana?
I do have one question for the young lady from DDA. His question was presented to me by a citizen. I realize that this is -- there is no city money involved in this, and the money is going for facade and exterior improvements.
Correct.
Is there a way to know that the money would not be used for inside improvements? I mean, how do we know it's strictly for outside improvements? Someone couldn't divert it to, you know, make the inside nicer?
Oh, sure. So, the ME -- if this is -- when this is approved, the money will go to the city, and it will be given out by the DDA to the appropriate places it needs to go. So, we'll be able to approve all of that money.
So, somebody will be monitoring?
Yes.
The building process?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Just, you know, just rolling up and up. There is tax money involved here. Thank you.
Certainly.
Any other discussion? Seeing none? Call the question. All those in favor of the motion by Mr. Baldini say aye or yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay. That motion carries. The next item is a presentation of the Father Marquette Park by the Marquette Beautification and Restoration Committee. Mr. Erby, your spokesperson or the whole -- at all, right? Are you all going to speak?
No.
Okay.
Well, there's much more than me here, Mayor. Mr. Mayor and the City Commissioners, I would like to introduce to you the members of the ad hoc Father Marquette Restoration Committee, and Emily Lewis, Jill Lemire, President Tammy Witowoski.
Barb Kelly.
Barb Kelly. And Pat Gruber, as you all know, Pat. And of course, Bill Saunders, who will be talking to you in just a minute. We are here to make a presentation to you and a request. And I would like to start off by asking past President Emily Lewis to give just a brief overlay of what has been accomplished on the Father Marquette statue with your support and the community's support. Emily, if you would?
When I was president and chairperson of the Father Marquette statue, as you know, we took possession of the statue. The committee took possession of the statue for one year, and during that time, we restored the reliefs on the statue and had the statue cleaned. Actually, we had it cleaned twice because of vandalism. And then -- so that was kind of the completion of Phase One of this whole project, which was the restoration of the statue. And since then, we have installed cameras and lighting. And now, we're moving on to Phase Two, and I'll turn it over to Jerry.
Thank you, man. And, you know, by pointing out the camera and lighting, this is for night security. And through the efforts of Chief Angeli, we have periodic patrols. We'll walk through there and just take a view of the statue, make sure it's in good order. And the monitoring of the Father Marquette Park is done in the Police Department, so we really appreciate the city partnering with that. With this, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Bill Saunders. Bill, we commissioned to do a overlay of the accessibility and improvement. And the key here was ADA. We want to make sure that park is ADA. And Bill, if you would, I'll just turn it over to you.
Thank you, Jerry. I didn't realize that it's going to be difficult to point here, so if you need me to move away and point to something on the screen, I'll be glad to do that. Like Jerry mentioned, the starting point for our work at least was to see if there's a way to make the statue accessible for everyone, and that was the primary goal. And being at the top of the knob coming into town is a bit of a challenge. But in addition to that, you know, and not to say that the Father Marquette Park and statue doesn't have great standing in the community, because I think it does, but we wanted to enhance that if we could, both visually and as far as access goes. And not just the park, access to the park itself, but maybe see if we could do a better job of connecting it to the community. So, the goal was achieved, we think. And this image is primarily just the statue area itself. As everybody knows, it's a big rock knob, so it's very difficult to try and adjust grade by going down. So, everything to make this work really is built on top of what's there. It reduces the cost, and I think the basis of it is this winding path that's essentially perched on the face of the rock cliff towards the lake. And it actually is really sort of simple construction, because you really only have two sides, you know, the vertical support and then the horizontal section tied to the rock. And we think we can do that in a way that's really sustainable as far as maintenance goes by actually pouring an elevated slab as the walking surface, so it'll allow us to connect right to the edge of the rock, so you get kind of a neat feeling as you scale the side of the cliff to get to the top. The starting place for design was the outdoor accessibility guidelines for outdoor developed areas, which is a new ADA standard. But going beyond that, we tried to make it universally accessible, which essentially is, you know, if we can make it flatter, we'll make it flatter. You know, things we can do that are above and beyond that base plane of ADA is what we would do. So, what's represented here is actually a 1:20 slope to the top. And for reference, at the top of the stairs that are on the left-hand side, if you're up on the -- at the park, grade would be elevated about 18 inches or so there, which would allow us to pour a concrete slab to encircle the statue itself. We also tried to be -- pay attention to, you know, the fact this is a historic site, so we tried to keep as much of the quarry stone sidewalk and steps as possible. Sections that would be removed would be salvaged, so we could add a layer of stairs coming from the south section of that original sidewalk. Another feature, so I guess as you can imagine, the ramped walk going up the face of the cliff, south of the terminus of that, or I'm sorry, it would be to the east, actually, but downhill from that, there would be another platform. So, you'd have another viewing space for the public, but it would be separated vertically, so it has maybe another little sense of a private space to a degree. And then certainly people at the statue level would look over the top of anyone that's on that section. There's a retaining wall shown adjacent to the Lake Superior Community Partnership Office, and that lets us build sort of a little picnic plaza. Again, another viewing opportunity, be a great place to watch fireworks. And let's see. I think as far as connecting to the community, you know, we understand there's some plans evolving for Barragis Street, and, you know, maybe those aren't really rock solid at this point, but we wanted to just show this connection, you know, just for how simple it could connect to the community a little better with very little work. Essentially, just a connection path would allow connection to the North Country Trail, Iron Road Heritage Trail, and Lake Shore Boulevard. You know, it's just without a lot of work, it could really make a lot better connection. So, I think, Jerry, that's as far as you want to --
(inaudible)
Thank you.
They've done a great job of doing something that we envisioned, but we just couldn't see until you have a good architect come along and make his mark, and they've done a good job for us. We want to keep it simple, and we have. We've given you a little bit of pass, Phase One, and now we've talked about Phase Two. We want to thank you for the opportunity to allow us to recap our efforts to restore this wonderful piece of art. The Father Marquette statue is a completion of Phase One, and the ladies have done a great job, and what we brought up as far as the experts have done a phenomenal job. We stand before you to now ask you to allow us to complete our mission. We ask you to allow us to move into Phase Two. To do this, we request that you direct the city manager and staff to submit a request for a State of Michigan DNR trust grant. We will bring the fourth -- we will bring forth the needed grant match, and we ask that you give this project your priority number one. And we stand before you also now to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you for a very nice presentation and a very nice idea. Open it up to commissioners who have any questions of the group? Any questions? I have a question. I'll ask you. Is this fact or fiction? Is this -- am I imagining this, but there are three of these statues in the world, one on Mackinac Island, one here, and one in the U.S. Capitol?
Statuary Hall.
In Statuary Hall.
That's fact.
That's fact.
That's fact. I think that's very important, because that really emphasizes how unique and special this is. I mean, it is really a treasure.
And Mayor, that is correct.
It is a treasure. And we've had it unofficially appraised by the people who did the work on it as a statue that is about valued at $200,000 to $250,000.
Yeah.
That's setting at our entrance. That is our namesake Father Marquette.
It's actually unreplaceable.
Well, it's unreplaceable, but there was a number --
Well --
Don't keep me honest, by the way, anything I say.
Well, every time I go back to my hometown, Washington, and have an opportunity to go to Statuary Hall, I always pay a special visit to him there, so I knew the answer, but I just wanted to --
If I can add something to that, because every time I go to Mackinac Island.
Me, too.
And we go to Father Marquette, and we see the numerous people who have surrounded that statue and look at it and really not knowing what we know, you know, we want to convey to the community. So, thank you.
Can I say something to Mike?
Sure.
Mike, just to add to what you already know about the statue, the one on Mackinac Island and the one here are made out of bronze, and the one in Statuary Hall is marble. And our statue is the only one which has two reliefs on the sides, which really makes it special.
Yeah. Thank you. I have one other question, and then -- we deal with multiple advisory committees, and we have a Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, and this is a city park. Have you discussed this with them at all?
We have been -- and we've had numerous meetings with Carl Zucker.
Mm-hmm.
We probably met with him five or six times, and he's brought this information to the Park and Rec Board, and we have been directed to move forward. And of course, this is just asking for the grant. We're just moving this forward. It's not in the stage of where we would go public hearing and, you know, getting the committees involved.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Baldini?
Very good presentation. Two questions. One, how much do you think this will cost? And maybe I missed that.
About $200,000.
Okay. And secondly, are you going to attempt to replace the head and hands on the plaque?
That's already --
We already --
Already done? Okay. Thank you.
That's part of the restitution, which we had a figure, I believe, somewhere around $17,000 or $18,000 we have already put into the statue itself.
Okay. Any other?
And that's, by the way, community money. That's people coming forward with donations, no government money. This project is no government money, other than the grant through the DNR.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Kimbensey?
Well, I have a few questions, and I would like to say that I've been a member of this group. I haven't been to a meeting probably in almost two years, but I have been a member of it and fully support this project. However, I do have some concerns not going forward with the project, but asking one for the grant. I mean, this is something that is going to compete with grants that I believe we have a five-year plan going out for some of these MDNR trust fund grants. We don't?
I can answer that question. At this point, we do not have a trust fund grant that we will be applying for this year acquisition grant, or I'm sorry, project grant.
So, this would probably be the year to apply, since we don't have anything else competing with that?
If that's the commission's desire, yeah.
Okay. The other question, this is in the DDA district, correct?
Correct.
And we don't have any correspondence or support from the DDA. Is there any reason why?
We -- you understand what happened the last month with the director. We were meeting with their vice director. We met with her, with our people in the city, and they have support. They've given support. They've called in support. Their meeting is the 12th of February. We will get the support from them at that meeting while the grant is being processed.
Yes. I'd like to ask my fellow commissioners. It seems like every other group goes through, I guess, the right channels to get to us. And I certainly, with all of the latest buzz, don't want this to be seen as a, I guess, something that would be construed as special treatment, not having to go through Parks and Rec officially to be voted on, to be brought to us. I guess I'd like my fellow commissioners, if they want to respond to that, say anything. If not, that would be my recommendation, to have it come to us with some drawings with, I guess, their blessing, which is how we do everything else. And again, I'm saying that as a supporter of this project and a member of this group. Thank you.
If I can address that just with one comment, they will be part of the process. This is starting the grant moving. They will be part of the process. Once this is done, I believe we have to go through a public hearing, and, you know, that will take place. This is just starting the grant process, is what I'm asking, because there is a timeline on the grant, which is April 1. We'll have them all lined up, sir, you know, commissioned by that time. With the DDA, it was just a matter of what was happening internally that we couldn't get -- they didn't want to move forward with the board not acting on it. The board members support it, but they have to come together as a group.
(inaudible)
Yeah. And we know that there's a timeline on here, and this is why we need to move this forward. It has to be done by April 1.
Any other comments? Just one. Commissioner Kimbensey?
When is the next Parks and Rec meeting? Is that at the end of February, I guess?
It's the third Monday of the month.
Would that still give us enough time if we sent it through the right channels, like we do every other project?
Let me just say this. We'll be there at that meeting, but we still ask the commission to grant this to move forward.
Okay.
Guarantee we'll be there.
Okay. Any other comments from commissioners? Don't leave yet. Any other ones? Is there a motion regarding this, then, or not?
Do we -- do they need a motion from us to proceed?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you. Actually, staff needs the motion to continue working with them as requested.
Just a thought. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but a motion taking into account Commissioner Kimbensey's concern could include proceeding this with this grant and directing the Parks and Rec to deal with it at their meeting in February and proceed. I mean, that's what they want, and if we say that, that will happen. So, entertain a motion to that effect.
I would be --
All right. You have to raise your hand and be recognized, okay? Yes.
I'd be happy to make that, but I'm not so sure about the verbiage.
Well, you can make any motion you want.
Okay. I would like to support authorizing the city manager to proceed with the application process and also to include the Parks and Recs and have that documentation for us as part of that application.
Is there support to that? Commissioner Campana? Okay. Commissioner Baldini, any other comments?
I think it's a great project, and if we miss this application deadline, you know, then it gets delayed, so let's include the Park and Rec. I think from the documentation that we have seen, there's been involvement of them informally, and I think the DDA is probably will -- has had some disruption in its workload right now, so, okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Campana?
I think that this expansion will be very well received in the city, and due to the fact that they're working on a timeline that's coming close, I think we should do this. And as long as, you know, Parks and Rec will weigh in on this, I would support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Connolly?
I support the whole project. The motion is specifically to authorize continued work on this grant. It will come back to us for final authorization for the project itself after it's been through Parks and Rec and been vetted by the DDA. But there's no point in -- if there's no money, there's no point in going any further. So, I support authorizing the manager and his staff to proceed with pursuing this grant.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question, as submitted by Commissioner Baldini. All those in favor of the motion say yes. Yes. Opposed? That motion passes unanimously, and thank you very much to all seven of you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You just represent the good things that volunteers do in this community. Thank you very much.
No one benefits this but the city of Marquette.
Right. Thank you. Okay. The next presentation is the Smoke Free Prescott Park by the Prescott Advisory Committee Chairperson, Bob Chapman.
It's a pleasure to be here to talk to some of you again, and some of you for the first time regarding the Smoke Free Prescott Park. I'm going to give you some background information, review the rationale for the Prescott Park Advisory Committee recommendation, and take questions. Background. The Prescott Park Advisory Committee mission includes reviewing Park Advisory Committee mission includes reviewing and developing recommendations impacting Presque Isle Park and advising the City Commission regarding those recommendations. In 1886, Public Law Olmsted developed a management plan for Presque Isle Park at the request of Peter White. As a part of that plan for the park, Olmsted advised, quote, "Preserve it and treasure it as little altered as may be for all time," end quote. More recently, in 2009, NMU Professor John Anderton, unfortunately now deceased, in his book, "The Jewel in the Crown in Environmental History of Presque Isle Park," describes Presque Isle as, quote, "A little piece of wilderness within the city." So we have a highly valued piece of wilderness within our city that needs to be preserved in its natural state. The Presque Isle Park Advisory Committee believes that one approach to preserving the island is to minimize the threats to it from two major sources, fire and litter. Therefore, a part of the City Commission's 2004 strategic planning priorities is the designation of Presque Isle Park as a tobacco-free park. Your information package includes, which you got last week and I think you received again today, your information package includes the approved Strategic Planning Process Commission priority of a tobacco-free Presque Isle Park. At about this point in the process of developing this, it was decided that we should use the term "smoke-free" instead of "tobacco-free," since it appears that the existing smoking ordinance may need to be amended. So much for background. Your package includes the advisory committee's recommendation, and I want to briefly comment on the three reasons that the advisory committee is recommending a smoke-free Presque Isle Park. Reason one, as we all know, smoking requires combustion. Careless use of combustion can cause forest fires. Presque Isle Park's 323 acres includes about 213 acres of forest cover, or about two-thirds of the park. Fire Chief Tom Belt, in his letter included in your package, indicates that the existing forest cover in the park accumulates fuel that can create moderate heat, high-smoke conditions, and could support a dangerous crown or canopy fire. Fire could endanger people using the park, their vehicles, the pavilion, the old caretaker's residence, and possibly other built structures in the park. The chief also points out that the Marquette Fire Department is a municipal-type fire department, with limited access to the remote areas of Presque Isle Park, and would require mutual aid resources from the DNR and adjacent townships for a firefighting operation on Presque Isle. Finally, Chief Belt points out that eliminating smoking from the island would help manage the risk from wildfires. A second reason for a smoke-free park is litter. The use of cigarettes causes litter from cigarette butts which are unsightly, do not biodegrade, are harmful if ingested, and create toxic residue. Your information packet includes a letter from Carl Lindquist, the executive director of the Superior Watershed Partnership, dealing with the problem of cigarette butt litter. Carl points out that cigarette butts are the most common form of litter found on the beaches of our city. The third reason for a smoke-free park relates to health issues. Health issues related to smoking are well-known and understood. Your information packet includes a letter from Dr. Kevin Piggott, representing the Marquette County Group called ACHIEVE. ACHIEVE stands for Action Communities for Health Innovation and Environmental Change. In addition to information on health issues caused by smoking, Dr. Piggott presents other important information supporting the designation of Presque Isle Park as a smoke-free park. He points out and lists the many UP and downstate communities and organizations that have banned smoking. He deals with the concept of the personal, quote, "right to smoke," unquote. According to the Tobacco Control Legal Consortium, there is no constitutional right to smoke. He further states that the legality of local laws prohibiting smoking in outdoor places is generally upheld on the grounds that such laws are within the authority of local government to protect public health, safety, and welfare. Dr. Piggott's letter goes on to state that smoking in an open-air environment does pose a risk from secondhand smoke, in some cases equivalent to an indoor environment, and that there is no known level of safe exposure to secondhand smoke. Finally, the doctor comments on enforcement of a smoking ban, pointing out that simply because an ordinance may be difficult to enforce does not mean that it should not be developed or implemented. Finally, the Presque Isle Park Advisory Committee recommendation includes a provision for prior approval of an exception to a smoke-free ordinance for cultural reasons. So, in conclusion, the Presque Isle Park Advisory Committee is hereby advising the City Commission to support and take the necessary action to implement an ordinance to make Presque Isle Park a smoke-free park. Any questions?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chapman. Are there any questions or discussion or motions regarding this? Commissioner Campanzi.
Well, I've never been a cigarette smoker. I am in agreement of this. I think it's one of our crown jewels as a park. We are not making every park smoke-free. I know there are some concerns in the community that we were overreaching, I guess, our bounds, but I do believe Presque Isle is a pretty sacred place. One thing I did see in the packet that you gave to us was the clause, "Exception to this policy for cultural reasons could be prior approved by the city manager," particularly for Native Americans.
Correct.
Cultural. And I guess this is one area I think that more than any in our community is definitely a shared space. And so I, in approving this, I would like to make sure that their wishes are also taken into full consideration.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'm sorry, Commissioner.
I just have one question, and I remember seeing this at some point back before, but is this, does this, this ordinance that would be passed on to us, does it apply to just walking around Presque Isle and smoking, or is it in your car and smoking? Because it's one of the few parks we have that's drive-through and I think that a lot of people tend to smoke in their cars. So that's, that's my question.
That would depend on how the city wants to interpret this. My suggestion would be that this would apply to any person and their activities while they are in the park proper. That is, if you were in your car, that would, I would think that would include in your car. It would depend on how the ordinance is written. I have a concern about cars these days and the new cars in particular do not tend to have ashtrays. And therefore, if people are smoking in them, that tends to mean that butts go out the window, thereby increasing the likelihood of contributing to a fire. But to answer your question, if the city, as they do the ordinance, if they modify the smoking ordinance, determines that it's okay to smoke in your cars, that so be it. But that would not be our recommendation.
Any other? Commissioner Connelly?
I think this is a good start. There's a lot of places we can't smoke. We can't smoke on the northern campus. We can't smoke in any public buildings. We can't smoke on the whole hospital campus or the medical center campus. We're getting used to that idea. Less than 18% of Americans smoke, and I'll bet it's even smaller in Marquette, in Marquette County. So, and as I travel to other places, there are entire areas, like all the beaches in California, from the boardwalk on out are smoke-free, tobacco-free of all kinds.
Yes.
And they've really cleaned up their litter problem, other than just making it a safer environment for the children, other people who enjoy it. So I think I'd like to see this go through. I support it. I eventually would like to see this expand to other parks and would encourage the Parks and Rec Committee to look at all of our parks and make it smoke-free as we've done in a large area of our talent as it is now. And I would encourage, because of the cigarette butt problem, if you allow people to smoke in the cars, they, because it's stinky in their car, then they want to throw the butt out, because they don't want that stinky thing in the car. Well, don't put it there in the first place, but that's just my way of thinking. But I think we should ban smoking. And it's going to be a compliance issue and it'll be one of those things where the police aren't going to have a smoking patrol going around. But there's a park patrol that can help out with that. And if there is a large group that's smoking, you know, just this last summer, my wife and I were out having a picnic on Presque Isle, sitting there enjoying the evening, looking at the waves and the break wall, and a vanload of smokers came out and just, we were encloded by smoke. So I'd like to stop that. And that also means protecting our children that are using the butt playground, and particularly when new playground equipment goes in, protecting them. I have a little concern about, talking about the fire risk when we have barbecue pits there, though. I don't know that that's the best argument for it. But stick with the health, let's stick with the enjoyment of the park. And I think the fire issue is blowing smoke, if you will.
Yeah, the fire concern is primarily in that northern two-thirds of the island where it's mostly woods.
Commissioner Campana?
Bobby, I got a couple of questions. The first question, Presque Isle Marina, is that part of Presque Isle? Can they smoke there?
That is not, that is not officially part of the Presque Isle Park.
Can they smoke there? No, it's not. So that wouldn't apply to them?
I don't believe so.
Okay. The other part of this is, and you well know this, I've struggled with this recommendation. I mean, I've gone back and forth on it. You know, I'm not a smoker. I've never smoked. I don't like to be wrong, people that do smoke. And I agree with everything that you say here. I totally agree with that. I don't like to see cigarette butts. That really makes me angry. But the problem is, and I'm not a big fan of big government, and I really, you know, I hate to see more rules and regulations than we really need. You know, if we do pass this, I just don't see how we can enforce it. I mean, it's just, I don't believe it's anything that the police can do easily. People I've talked to in the community, and I've asked, because it's been bothering me, I've talked to a lot of people, you know, not too many, but as many as I could. The overwhelming response is they don't think we need this. Now, again, I'm totally against smoking. I hope you may, I hope you get it, but I just can't agree to the rules. I think that, you know, too many rules is too much. So, you know, I'm, eventually, if you get it, I'll be happy for you, but I just can't do it. I can't myself do this. I'm sorry. Thank you.
The next hand I saw go up was Commissioner Baldini's and then City Manager Vida.
I also have some serious reservations about the recommendation. I'm not a smoker and I suppose this is one of the unhealthy habits I intend to add to my lifestyle, but you provided three reasons for the recommendation. And it's a request to prohibit smoking. And to prohibit means then that we have to enforce, which means the police have to enforce. And in this day and age with cell phones, I read the log and the paper, I'm quite sure that people will be on the island and take out their cellphone and say, "There's somebody here smoking. Get somebody out here and arrest them." Is that really the best utilization of our police staff at that time? And I think that the reasons, fire safety, environmental, healthy, fire risk, if you look at the chief's letter, he says that "The probability for an extreme fire event as described above through, though, would be low. More typically, we would expect a ground-fuel fire to travel at a slow moderate rate and generate moderate to heavy smoke conditions." He does go on to say that elimination of smoking material would help the management of that risk, however. And if we prohibit smoking because of the probability of fire, then I'm assuming we're going to say no barbecues at the island or that type of activities of that nature. It would logically have to follow. And the environmental issue of unsightly butts, I think we all really dislike them, but they are everywhere. So should we then logically apply this to Harlow Park, Williams Park, Matson Park, Tours Park, so on and so forth? And the third reason that smoking is a serious health problem, I think the documentation really proves that, but is this going to deal with that problem and secondhand smoke? I would suspect the cars going around the island probably bear more toxic fumes than the cigarettes going around the island. We pass rules and regulations to attempt to control behavior, speeding, drinking, discharge of explosives in city limits, things of that nature. But I also feel that we've learned over the years that if you start being prescriptive about behavior, that's not necessarily where the people are at. It fails. And one of the principles of democracy that I very often teach the students is called the concept of volunteerism, that we voluntarily obey most of the laws that are passed in America. And it would be absolutely impractical and impossible for us to hire enough police officers to impose laws that the majority of people do not support. You know, we saw it with prohibition. We see it with other things. I think, you know, I don't support smoking. I don't like smoking. And I think inside the buildings, one thing, outside is another thing. And I think it's another thing of trying to be very prescriptive with people's behavior. I suppose I would like to see signs posted, you know, "We would appreciate if you not smoke on Presque Isle." And I would suspect that would probably be as effective as requiring us to pass another ordinance and requiring the police to enforce it. The worst thing we could do is pass another ordinance and not have it enforced. I think it begins to deteriorate things. I would have trouble, I will have trouble supporting this, a ban on it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from commissioners who haven't spoken? Commissioner Frazier?
Have you got some, I know what I was on Presque Isle, but you had talked to other cities, townships that have got smoke-free parks. Can you talk a little bit about that? Like how other townships have dealt with smoke-free parks or anything, and what their processes have been and how they have handled it?
I have not talked to other municipalities or parks. I have talked with a number of people from Northern Michigan University who have just gone with a tobacco-free policy. And as I perceive what NMU is doing is they are going gently with enforcement initially. They are suggesting that people remind smokers who are smoking on campus that they are not to be doing that. They are doing a lot of, they did a lot of community education of faculty, staff, and students to convince them as to the benefits of not having tobacco on campus. And I would hope that when we do this, that we would have some sort of community education program explaining why we're doing this and asking for people's cooperation. I would not expect, again, it would be up to the law enforcement people, I would not expect that we would use a SWAT team approach to try and bust everybody that is first observed with a cigarette in hand at the island, but have some sort of reasonable enforcement effort. I do know that there are more and more communities and municipal and county organizations going smoke-free in their recreation areas. And I'm not hearing a lot of problems with implementation of that. That's not to say there are not some problems.
Any others who haven't spoken? In fairness, Mr. Vida has had his hand up for a while. I was letting Commissioner speak one time first.
Thank you, Your Honor. I only wanted to thank you and point out that we were hearing a lot of the benefits from the committee. I would ask the City Commission, should they decide to go through with this, to give us an opportunity to maybe come back and propose what some of the costs of enforcement might be or some of the challenges that we might have to work through to give you the outcome you're looking for? I appreciate Commissioner Campanzi's points on the culturally significant kind of fire making, but there will be signage costs. There will be some type of enforcement costs. There might be some kind of public works costs associated with providing certain types of receptacles that would allow people who, prior to going into the park, might have to dispose of some kind of materials. Depending on the scope of what kind of smoking is or isn't approved, there might be removing some of the city infrastructure. I know the pavilion has a large outdoor fire pit. We have fire pits in the picnic areas. If that's part of no smoking or not having inflammatory materials on the island to prevent forest fires, you know, we'd either want to go back and look at preserving that or providing some other kind of public safety support to manage that. And then above and beyond all else, then come up with some way that we could maybe get get some sense of what the secondary behavior might be. The example is given with Northern that when they declared a smoke-free campus, everybody walks over and stands in the city right of way on the other side of the street. And they consequently create a problem for people driving up and down Wright Street because there's a lot of distracted walking and people who are standing too close to the curb. And equally, we have other challenges with dogs on the beach where people don't necessarily know what beaches will allow dogs and what beaches won't allow dogs. And if we're going to be changing around the current way the community behaves, we'd like at least to give some thought to people who might otherwise not appreciate the commission intent, to give them an alternative that wouldn't be disruptive, some other part of the community interest. So I would ask that if this is adopted, we get an opportunity as staff to come back with recommendations that maybe provide some options around those issues.
Commissioner Campana?
Well, I guess I still am in favor of this. I think there's ways to work around it. I think there's still ways to have open pit grilling out there. Our zoning ordinance has maybe 100 pages in it. These are ordinances that we are all supposed to follow, but I can guarantee that any one of us in any given year probably violates several of those ordinances, not knowingly or because no one's going to be there to enforce it. So I look at this as a sense of pride for our community. Mr. Olmsted, who designed Central Park, was the one who actually thought Presque Isle was such a gem that it should be that and only that. So I look at this as not something to punish people or give them another rule. I look at it as a sense of pride in our community to say, "Let's do all we can to preserve it to make sure that nothing happens." So I look at you bringing this forward in that sense. There's still going to be people that drive around in their cars and smoke. There's still going to be people who throw cigarette butts wherever they are out there. However, I think this, to me, is a symbol of pride, and I know that we can find ways to actually implement it and still keep our open grilling and everything we have going on. So I fully support it.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Reynolds?
Well, I've been mulling this over and listening, and I tend to agree with Commissioner Campana, and I believe in the same way. I don't like to think that I can control other people's behaviors, nor would I want to. But that being said, I would be okay with the city manager's office coming forward with a proposition of what he thinks it would cost. I do also agree with Sarah that it is a beautiful place, and I'd like it to stay that way. To be honest, I am a smoker. I never smoke on Presque Isle, nor would I, because it's beautiful and wonderful, and that's what I hope that most people would be like. You know, you go to somewhere like that, you don't light up a cigarette as you're driving around, but we're all not that way. So, that being said, I would be, I'd like the city manager's office to come up with, you know, how much that he thinks it would cost. And I don't think that we would have a bunch of patrolling. I do think we would probably have instances where people do call the police, but I don't think it would be people writing tickets all the time. But just, I generally agree with Commissioner Campana that I have a hard time controlling people's behaviors and thinking that's okay.
Okay. Commissioner Baldini?
If we're suggesting here that we're going to pass this and not enforce it with police authority, then why pass it? I think it only begins to demean a police force. And I think, just to put something else, it's been there for 123 years or more, longer than that, really, as in the park. And I really think we, as a society, should think about what laws we pass, and if we can audit some of them, then why don't we just put an advisory think out? Thank you.
Thank you. I have a comment, direct this to Police Chief Angeli. Since the smoking ordinance banning smoking in bars and restaurants, have you had, you know, to hire 50 new officers every day to go and beat people up and arrest them and get in fights because they're smoking? Or does that really occur? There's an example of an ordinance that, once it's kind of accepted, do you feel there has been just this burdensome enforcement issue of people violating the smoke ordinance?
No, we only had to hire 10. No, just kidding. No, I guess, you know, the history of the smoking ordinance has been that we generally respond to complaints. The nature of the indoor smoking is that way because people would be smoking inside, and then they would, if they couldn't handle it internally by the building owner or the manager of the restaurant, wherever it started, then they would call us to enforce it. With regard to this particular topic, I would imagine it would follow along the same lines. We, of course, would have very few people smoking in the wintertime out there, even on the beaches, but in the summertime, we do have a park patrol that would be instructed to keep an eye out for that kind of thing and take enforcement action, which initially would probably be education, warnings, that type of thing. And while at the same time, we'd be responding to people who would call and complain about somebody smoking. It would be a little bit of an effort on our part, but I don't think it's anything that we couldn't overcome.
All right. Thank you. I just, I'm going to support this motion. I think Commissioner Campana's comment about pride is very important. I spent a year living in the bottom of the Grand Canyon, and I was there two years ago. And I got out of my car, and there's a sign, "No Smoking." And what a difference, because 30 years ago, 50 years ago, it was like Butt City. It was just cigarette butts all over. This was meticulously cleaned, and it was a source of pride. And I never had one park ranger lurking around arresting people. People viewed it as, "This is a very special place, and we're going to keep it that way." So I'm going to support it. Any further comments? Unless it's about blowing smoke. Mike?
I wish to make a motion.
All right. Please do.
I move that the city commission authorize the city manager to develop an ordinance regulating smoking on Presque Isle Park with an analysis of the impact on the park itself and on enforcement, and various options available to the commission.
Is there support for that? Commissioner Fraser?
I'll support.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of that motion, which I, do you have that, Commissioner, Mr., all those in favor of the motion, please say yes. Yes. All those opposed, say no. Okay. I think that's four to three, if I'm counting right. No need to roll call. Commissioner Campana, Baldini, and Reynolds. And thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chapman, for your, on behalf, thank you, on behalf of the commission, and thank your committee. And this was certainly an exercise in democracy, wasn't it? Having everybody, and I hope we're still friends now.
Yes, we are.
I was talking about the commission being friends.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Bob. All right. Okay. Next. Well, Chad, why don't you come up? You're going to, the next agenda item is the Harbor Advisory Committee, and I don't think we're going to have to take any four to three votes for your presentation tonight. Thank you for coming.
You never make these tall enough. My name's Chad Lewis. I'm the chairperson for the Harbor Advisory Committee, and this is our annual report to the commission. So, so far, we have seven member positions. Currently, only four of them are filled. In 2014, we had 15 regular, excuse me, we had 15 meetings, 12 regular and three special. This year, we did, I'll touch on it again in another slide, but we did kind of review our mission. And our mission currently reads that the Harbor Advisory, or the Harbor Committee advises the city commission on shoreline waterfront development and offshore waters near Marquette with an emphasis on harbor development regarding both pleasure craft and commercial vessels and operations of marinas, mooring fields, and launch facilities. Our meetings are normally on the third Tuesday of every month at Citizens Forum in Lakeview Arena. This year, we had a number of things going on. We were fairly busy, and we've continued to be busy. One of the major things we dealt with, which was kind of spurred by a joint meeting with the city commission, we reviewed the kind of ongoing phased project for Presque Isle Marina. And the reason we did that is due to the unusual weather we had last winter, the city, I think, went to all, the commission went to all committees and said, you know, "Look at your projects and, you know, consider that funding is going to be very tight and may run short. Please look at your major projects and see if there's a way that those can be changed or if they're critical." And so from that meeting, we were kind of given the charge of reviewing that project, reviewing the current demand and the need for the project, and then, you know, kind of double-checking all the numbers and digging in to see if there's any way that we can change either how much it costs or how we go about implementing the project. That's been ongoing, and we'll touch on that later in the presentation. Another thing that's kind of gone along with that, and if anybody's familiar with anything that's gone on with Presque Isle, you know, over the last few years, we've started looking at long-term maintenance fund policies for both marinas and to ensure that when these marinas reach the end of their useful life, there's some sort of fund available to help kind of jumpstart, you know, rebuilding that marina for its next lifecycle. Another thing that was related to the weather, we had to, you know, gave some direction on issues relating to Cinder Pond Marina building and its collapse. And we also advocated for, you know, better temporary facilities, which I believe will still be in service next year. The other thing that we did, we did, in a special meeting, discuss with the commission our scope and, you know, what the commission wanted to see the Harbor Advisory Committee doing. And what came of that was kind of a rewritten mission statement, as well as an understanding that we are not just here to oversee the marinas, but all waterfront activity in the city of Marquette. Goals for the upcoming year, we, as usual, will hear lots of public comment and advise on the upcoming marina rates. We will continue to advise the commission on the Presque Isle Marina project. In fact, we're hoping to have a kind of a final analysis, hopefully, within our next meeting. We're also, about a year ago, we started reviewing the harbor master plan, which hadn't been reviewed in several years, and now we're looking at that on an annual basis and keeping it up to date. And then we'll advise on other projects as needed. Our main issues that we've been dealing with, when we, you know, when the commission looks at our proposal, and we finally get it together for Presque Isle Marina, it's going to discuss marina rates and how we come to those rates. From there, that may ultimately lead to a general rate discussion for both marinas and also the mooring field. The other big thing that we've been discussing is, you know, because we're dealing with Presque Isle Marina, and we have, you know, kind of put the brakes on the project there, we do want to stress that it is generally at the end or maybe beyond the end of its useful life, and there certainly is action that needs to be taken as we go forward. Lastly, we are a seven-member committee, but we do only have four, and I believe we've had four for the last several years. And in fact, this year, we've had a fair amount of turnover with the long-term, or longstanding chair left, and then Commissioner Conley stepping in very briefly and then, you know, being on the commission. So we are still seeking three more members for our committee. So now I'd open it to questions.
Thank you very much, Chad, for all your work. And, you know, again, a plug to get four more folks to join you, because you really have some major challenges you're working on. Any, Commissioner Reynolds?
My only comments are to you. We had the opportunity to see a subcommittee to meet with you guys, and I'm just thankful that you're on the board. And now that, you know, Mike is gone, I saw how passionate you were about anything to do with the harbors, and you were very well-spoken, and I appreciate that. And also, we had somebody apply to be on Harbor Advisory, so that'll be in our next meeting. So maybe you're going to get some more members, maybe.
Commissioner Campana?
Chad, briefly, could you just tell us and those in the audience what developments we're going to see at the upper, Presque, upper Marina and Cinder Pond Marina this spring? What's coming? What's coming down the pike?
I think that, and I hope I get this right, and probably Carl can help me a little bit, we are going forward with the boat launch project, and I believe that goes into construction next summer. Is that right, Carl?
That's slated for a spring project.
Is it a spring project? Okay. So we've got that coming up. I think that's probably the major project going forward. And then I believe we're also going to look at, we have a special meeting coming up in the beginning of February to start looking at initial plans for the Cinder Pond building. So I think those are the major things that are coming up right now.
Thank you.
Commissioner Conley?
I'd like to thank you for the work you do. There's really more work to do than you would think, as I found out. And I thank you for doing that there. And thank you for working to save Presque Isle Marina. Really, your efforts and your restructuring of the remodeling and the rate structure is going to keep that going forward. So I thank you for that. My own position here on the commission, I would like to see the Harbor Advisory Committee continue to be, or particularly in the future, be involved with waterfront decisions. Doesn't mean regulating the beaches, but it means some input. As we talk about the ORDOC, is it appropriate to use that as a Marina? As we look at the pilings, what's the Harbor Advisory Committee's feelings and their input on, do we need another Marina? And things like that. So I was glad that we were able to change the mission statement to get the Harbor Advisory Committee involved, and I promise to keep them engaged in that, in those discussions in the future. Question for you, as we look at the Cinder Pond Marina replacement building, will it be, other than your own monthly meetings, will there be opportunities for the public, and the voting public particularly, to give their input into the design of that building?
I believe there will be, and I think that the actual design of that is more of, it's a planning issue, I think, outside of the Cinder Pond. So it's probably a Carl, better Carl question.
Thank you. We have built three public meetings. The first one will certainly be with the Harbor Advisory Committee. These are open to the public. And I believe the first one will be their standard meeting, and that's 30% complete design, so looking for programming recommendations outside of what the staff has already programmed from an operation standpoint. Then there'll be an additional one probably early March, in which we'll invite the public to come and see what we've come up with, and then bring it back and show them what we've designed or what Mayewski's designed based on all the feedback the public has received or provided.
The point of my question is to make sure, because every once in a while, the public comes up with this really great idea, and they say, "You know, we did it wrong last time. Can't we just put the bathroom over here?" And you look at it, and you go, "What was I thinking? Let's put the bathroom there." And I just don't want us to, because we're, hopefully, this building won't fall down, and we're going to have it for a really long time, and we're going to live with its design. So I want to have the voters looking at it and saying, "Yeah, that's going to work."
Okay. Other comments? Commissioner Fraser?
Chad, any plans on Presque Isle Marina in the future to have a third pier add back in? I know the one closest to the break wall is demolished, and it's just two piers.
Yeah. So if you look at the, if you look at the plan for it, it does call for three piers. And I believe the reason that one was taken out, it was able to be included in the dredging for the, when the emergency dredging was done. And so when you look at the plan, there are three piers, and when we present our final assessment and kind of reassessment, I guess, of this project, that'll be covered in that, you know, as far as the demand, the current demand and what we believe the future demand of that Marina is going to be. So that'll, that information will be, you know, in that. So that'll, that information will be, you know, in that presentation.
Other comments? Commissioner Campisi?
Can you expand on some of the options you're looking at for a long-term maintenance fund with the depreciation versus timeline in projects? Is that?
Sure. Well, the big issue is, it's kind of fee-based. So the, you know, current rates and that sort of thing, and if you compare those to the expensive, it basically covers, and I think it's Cinder Pond Marina, it covers bond debt, or it did cover bond debt, and so now, we don't really put any extra money away for like a sinking fund for the future. And so what we've been doing is looking at both marinas and saying, you know, what do we believe the depreciation of this is going to be? What do we think, you know, good regular maintenance is? And then working back and saying, what do we need to charge or what needs to be being put towards that fund? And I think something we take a lot of public comment on, and you as a commission will need to be deciding, is that the marinas are somewhat subsidized by the general fund. And so going forward, if you don't want them to be that way, we have to charge a lot more money. And what we've kind of learned from speaking, you know, from a lot of our public comment is most voters aren't willing to pay that. And so in the presentation we're going to give, you know, when we, you know, get it all together for the Presque Isle Marina, we're going to talk about that in depth. In fact, that's kind of the last thing we're waiting to put together, and discuss, you know, what is, what kind of income is needed to properly maintain the marina, establish a sinking fund, and be ready to replace that marina at the end of its useful life. So, did that answer your question?
It does. And I think that's excellent. I know this has been a topic for the commission long before I got on. And I hope that this is something that when the boathouse gets built, it is also in that category. I think there's a lot of community, citizens concerned that the city's going to take on this ownership, and the funds are not going to be there to maintain it. And what do you do after that? So I think this is an excellent idea. We're starting to see a lot of public organizations do this for things that are important to their communities, so thank you for looking at that.
Any other comments? Again, on behalf of the commission, thanks, Chad, for all the hard work and all the hard work in the future, and glad we have another person joining you, and there's still three opportunities to join you. So hopefully, some folks will become interested and pursue that.
Well, thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, Chad. Okay. Next, we have boards and committees. If I could have Chris, Christopher Kovila, Patrick Myron, and Evan Bonzel come up to the speaker's stand there up here. Patrick, why don't you guys come over and stand here so you'll be on camera? Patrick, it's my pleasure to welcome you to the Peter White Public Library Board. It's a great board, and thank you for your long interest in this and being willing to serve. It's a five-year term, so appreciate it very much.
With the option to renew, I believe.
Yes, it is, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, you're welcome. I've served on it for 10 years, and it's a very worthwhile board to be on. Thank you.
Yes.
Do you have any, anything you'd like to say?
No, I just, I see it as both kind of the cliche honor and privilege, but it, as an institution, has been very important in my personal life since I moved here to attend Northern in 1990. Now that I have a five-year-old daughter, I'm there more than ever, and it's her favorite place to be. So the staff, the materials, everything there, it's such a great place.
Well, thank you very much for being willing to serve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And last but not least, here is Evan, Evan Bonzel. Evan is a senior at Marquette Senior High School. I owe you both an apology. I thought that we were going to have to get you in early, and this is hardly early, an hour and 15 minutes of torture. I didn't know we were going to have such much, such a good discussion. But you're off to school, off to college next fall, and you're going to be serving on the Sustainable Community Ad-Hoc Committee with one of our commissioners here. And just great to have you, and thank you for stepping up and serving, and appreciate it. Hope you enjoy it, and we welcome your input. It's good to have good, young folks with different ideas, so appreciate it very much. Would you like to say anything?
I would just like to thank the commission for allowing me to learn and to serve the community.
Thank you. And again, my apologies, and we've got to work on getting you guys earlier than having you sit through that, but thank you. And you've learned probably something.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, yeah, thank you.
The next item is appointments. We have Mary Hazaras for the Board of Review for a term beginning 20115, ending in 2000, ending in February 118. And an appointment, a motion appropriate to that would be, could someone make that motion?
We can do them all at once.
We can do them all at once, then. And then reappointments, which is great because these folks are signing up again, and that's Elizabeth Grill for the Board of Appeals for a term ending February 1st, 2018. Paul Schlegel, the Planning Commission Representative on the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term ending February 15th, 2016. And Dan Torres, the Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for a term ending in February 1st, 2018. So a motion to approve all of those, that one motion would be appropriate. Commissioner Campana?
I make a motion that we appoint and reappoint the so-named members to the respective boards for the terms listed.
Commissioner Connelly?
Support.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, that was passed unanimously. The next item is public comment. Public comment may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address and city or township of residence. Please step forward if you'd like to speak and address.
My name is Reggie Durant. I live at 2523 U.S. Highway 41 West in Marquette, and I'm representing our business, the Cedar Motor Inn, and I, I'm just asking the commission, I know it's on the consent agenda tonight, and asking your support to continue moving forward, the effort to create a tourist-oriented design sign ordinance. So I hope we can get your support. Just a little note, our business has been in Marquette Township for, going on 47 years, four generations of my family's worked there. So it's important to us. We don't have the financial resources like the chains do, and we're independent, so a small sign like the Todd Sign would be very, very helpful for our business. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come forward?
Good evening. My name is Doug Russell. I live at 130 Edgewood Drive in Chalkley Township. I'm here this evening as the Acting Director of Room at the Inn, Marquette County's Emergency Homeless Shelter, which has been in operation since November of 2007, rotating among a dozen different churches, providing shelter and a hot meal for those adults who have nowhere else to stay. This past October, we were able to open the doors for our new warming center located at 447 West Washington Street here in Marquette. And we've been very excited about the public's response to our new warming center. We've been very busy with serving, we serve a hot community breakfast there every morning. My goal of being here this evening is to invite the commissioners and the city manager to join us on any morning of their choosing for breakfast, or if you'd like to volunteer to help us serve breakfast, that'd be even better. But if you're interested, if you'd like to call the office ahead of time so we can get things set up, but we'd love to see you there. It's been, again, the shelter or the center really has been, one thing I didn't plan on was having the number of people walking in off the street looking for ways to help, not just for the hot meal that's helping anybody, but people who want to volunteer. We obviously have a great deal more exposure being on West Washington Street than the former warming center, and people are responding as our community always does. We accept no government money. We rely solely on the donations and foundation grants to keep us operating year to year. And we've been very fortunate that we've been able to continue to operate as we do. In those seven-plus years, we've been the recipient of approximately 75,000 volunteer hours for people in our community, which today equates to a little over $1.5 million of volunteer time and effort. So again, would love to see you at the warming center. Stop at any time. Coffee's always on in the morning, but we do have a hot breakfast starting 8:00. We'd love to see you there. Thank you.
Before you go, you didn't give the phone number for people to call, for the commissioners to call and volunteer, as well as the community. What's your phone number?
Sir, it's 227-9171.
And thank you for a very positive message, and appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Frank Cheverito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette, to speak on item nine. These are my opinions. High waters damaged all three lifeguard stands along McCarty's Cove, one of them brand-new and unneeded to begin with. Please use portable stands and remove them at summer's end so we who appreciate nature needn't look at three year-round eyesores. December 8th, Baldini claimed that public comment is only for items that the board will vote on, implying that once your business is over, there's no need for our comments. He's unmindful to the advantages of us commenting on your discourse while the items are fresh on our minds and the department heads are assembled. He also claimed that a conflict of interest is one where he personally benefits. Well, if you're able to provide three wives an 85% private club on our public beach, their husbands do benefit. His point is true that relations in a small town can make it hard to operate without a conflict, but that doesn't excuse Campana. January 12th, Dave restated that the law states there is no conflict. He's unable to discern a legal conflict, which no one accused him of, to the ethical type which many believe he committed. Dave wasn't listening. People feel he'd have had the sense to recuse himself were his fifth vote not needed for a release item. Dave's also mistaken that what's to be said can be said in three minutes, as if he'd know. While this is usually true, your level of blunder, as detailed on record, requires more than three minutes to keep abreast of. Dave claimed that people can call him to let themselves be known. History shows that meaningful discourse doesn't count unless it's recorded so we can determine who said what, when. He further claimed Niagara's group stretches the truth without providing any previously requested examples. To the contrary, I've offered examples on how the rowers only say what they want us to hear, testimony which you've chosen to ignore because you're politically bent on building a boathouse. One specific claim that Niagara didn't divulge the measly 15% for public use is untrue. Your email history uncovers allegations of the sweetheart deal that you offered the rowing club, as well as the manager's failure to recuse himself. He recused himself in the public eye, not behind the scenes, where the decision was not only made, but rushed many times to be settled by the previous board from which you knew you had your five votes. Angelie wrote, "It will mean moving ahead very aggressively if we are to succeed." Who is "we"? You, the public, or three spouses of the powers that be? Citizens are urged to read the quotes for themselves at savefounder'slandingbeach.com. You're asked to recognize your predicament by giving us our due chance to vote on the destiny of our own public shoreline. You'll come across as less deceitful than if a court ends up deciding for you. The manner by which you've removed our public from the processes partly explains why so many Planning Commission seats were vacated. And it would also help to have that timer up front so we can see it.
Thank you, Mr. Verito, for your comments. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I don't, we could dispense with reading the consent agenda, we can all read it, is that okay? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as recorded? Commissioner Connelly?
I move that the commission adopt the consent agenda as recorded.
Commissioner Campana?
I second that.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, that motion passes, and we move to item number nine, the Cinder Pond Marina MDNR Waterways Grant. Could the clerk read that agenda item, please?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. The city of Marquette received a Michigan Department of Natural Resources Waterways Grant to address emergency expenses associated with the Cinder Pond Marina facility demolition and utility relocation at totaling $79,100. Fortunately, all costs were reimbursed by the city's insurance carrier, the Michigan Municipal League Liability and Property Pool, and emergency grant funds were not required. City staff requested an amendment to the emergency grant agreement to include professional architectural and engineering services and construction of footings and foundation expenses. MDNR Waterways approved the request and have provided the city commission with an agreement addendum. If approved, the proceeds will offset professional services expenses not covered by the MML Liability and Property Pool. Any dollars remaining will be applied toward the construction of a new harbor service facility. This is a 50% match grant. It is intended that insurance claim proceeds will suffice as local match. Fiscal effect, MDNR Waterways emergency proceeds will fund $79,100 for professional services and footing and foundation construction, not funded by the MML Liability and Property Pool. Recommendation, adopt the attached resolution approving the addendum agreement totaling $79,100 to fund professional services and facility construction, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement and resolution as required. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Mr. Verito, you wish to speak on this item?
Frank Cheverito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette, these are my opinions. According to your supplement, city staff requested an amendment to the emergency grant agreement to include professional architectural and engineering services and construction of footings and foundation expenses. Any dollars remaining will be applied toward the construction of a new harbor service facility. Your addendum under the fourth whereas reads, "In conjunction with the original agreement project work, funding professional services to conduct soil borings, footing, foundation, and building design, draft all bid documents, obtain all permit and local approvals, and oversee construction management has been requested," end quote. December 15th, you were warned that you're ahead of yourselves again by moving too far along with the new building, not knowing the outcome of the boathouse matter. You've heard requests to first study the viability of incorporating two boating-related facilities into a single footprint, an important consideration before spending funds on building design. Constructing a larger building at the marina seems achievable by using available space just west of the proposed structure and moving the parking just west of that. A new protected dock for the rowers would extend just south of the south pilings, as previously mentioned but misunderstood by this board. By now, you should understand. It's more efficient to incorporate two related uses into one building or one parcel than to scatter different buildings for each entity along our public shoreline. You're asked to proceed no further on your professional service agreement until we either instruct the architect to incorporate the facilities into one building or derive at a more responsible plan to build at the rower's current spot. If you proceed now anyway, then don't cry later that there's no place to put a boathouse. Before we pay to design a building, at least put the matter to a vote to give our citizens their due right to determine the best use of their own public beach. As you were warned, December 15th, your continued ignorance surrounding this boathouse may result in our loss of another optimal land use opportunity without even giving it a fair chance.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you, anyone have a motion for this agenda item? Commissioner Campana?
I move that we adopt the attached resolution approving for the addendum agreement totaling $79,100 to fund professional services and facility construction, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement and resolution as required.
Commissioner Baldini?
Support.
Commissioner Campana? Any comments?
Nothing further.
Mr. Baldini, any comments? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say yes. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? No. Say no, okay? That passes unanimously. The next item and final item is item number 8F, which is item number 10, which is the Smart Zone Satellite Agreement. Mr. Clerk, could you read that, please?
Yes, Your Honor. At its meeting on October 15th, 2014, the city commission approved a resolution to enter into an agreement with the cities of Houghton and Hancock and the city of Marquette Local Development Finance Authority to create a satellite Smart Zone district in the city of Marquette. At its meeting on August 15th, 2014, the city commission...oh, sorry. I've lost my place. I'll start again. At its meeting on October 14th, 2014, the city commission approved a Smart Zone Satellite Development and Tax Increment Financing Plan, which was submitted to the MEDC. The MEDC is requesting that the city and LDFA enter into an agreement directly with the MEDC for the Smart Zone Satellite in order for the development of a TIF plan to move forward...development and TIF plan to move forward. At its meeting on January 20th, 2015, the LDFA approved the agreement. Should the city approve the agreement with the MEDC, said agreement will be forwarded to the MEDC to be attached to the development and TIF plan that was submitted in October of 2014. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, approve the attached city of Marquette Smart Zone Agreement with the MEDC and the Marquette Local Development Finance Authority for the Marquette Smart Zone Satellite and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Commissioner Baldini?
I would move that we approve the attached city of Marquette Smart Zone Agreement with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation and the Marquette Local Development Finance Authority for the Marquette Smart Zone Satellite and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign that agreement.
Is there support? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Commissioner Baldini, any comments?
I think we've had a great deal of time on this. Twenty-five years, and we have seen the positive results of it, of the whole Hancock area. And this being a satellite one, it's not going to happen overnight, but I think it's a good beginning. And it's part of everything else that's going on. It's part of economic development, another tool that we have, and I'm advocating this more.
Commissioner Campana?
I did.
Who seconded it?
Sir.
I'm sorry. Sir.
I don't have any real comments, but I did have a question for the city manager, or Kyle, or whomever. Once this...if this gets submitted and approved this evening, it goes to the MEDC, and then what's the next step?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Commissioner. Let me ask Gary Simpson to come forward and explain what happens next.
You were close. I'm number three in the list. The next step, once it's approved here, it will be sent to MEDC, as was already said. Then, once MEDC attaches it to the development and TIF agreement, they will pass it to the state treasurer, and it's the state treasurer that will give their blessing or not if we can capture some of the school taxes. And if you recall, back in October, when we were talking about the plan, it's the capture of the school taxes that really makes the whole thing work for us. And the schools won't be out any tax money. The state reimburses the schools. So that's why the state treasurer has to give their blessing to it. And then, hopefully, the timeline I was given was, hopefully, by the end of March, we will have the state treasurer's decision.
Don't run off. Any further questions?
Wasn't going anywhere.
No.
Why...I have a question. Why is this occurring right now? I mean, why, all of a sudden, we have to do this? What made them want this?
Yeah. This is something that everybody's still trying to get their bearings on. We are the first satellite district, and this is just something that, after we had submitted our development TIF plan, the MEDC attorney or attorneys felt like that even though we had already approved an agreement with the other communities to do a satellite Smart Zone, they felt like...the attorneys felt like they needed to...each entity also needed an agreement directly with the MEDC. So in effect, we're kind of setting the standard for the other satellites as they come into fruition.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Kambenzi?
The question I had, and the reason I pulled it off, under section 3.05, the Smart Zone Plan shall include a budget that includes at least $200,000 a year for operations. Am I correct in saying this is a 15-year agreement?
It is. The TIF is good for 15 years, but the satellite Smart Zone will be in existence until the end of time, unless we want to get rid of it before then. But the TIF is good for 15 years, and that's what that's referring to.
Okay. And so this first year, the city has to put how much?
Yes. The projections in the first year show that we're probably going to be a little bit short. So the city was going to have to put in a loan, and I forget the exact amount. It was, let's just say, $50,000. I'm not sure if it was that much. But then, in the future years, that loan will be repaid with interest.
And do we...is that part of this agreement, or do we have that with the LDFA?
It's implied it's part of this agreement. That's the guarantee, the $200,000. So the state is just saying, "We don't care how you come up with it, but you need to guarantee $200,000." And in the projections, we were seeing the first year in the TIF, and that's including the school tax capture. If the schools aren't captured, it's going to be a whole different ballgame at that point.
Okay. By going with this agreement, I think the biggest difference is that the first Smart Zones didn't have to pay. They didn't have to come up with an absolute amount. So in signing this agreement, I want to make sure that the city commission still retains some control should we not get any business. I don't think that's going to happen, but if we sign this, do we say, "Well, every year, we will continue to contribute however much is needed to satisfy the state"?
Well, the city commission will have control by approving the budget for the LDFA, and it's up to the LDFA to make sure the Smart Zone gets the money that's due it. But the city commission does have ultimate control by approval of the budget.
So if next year...I mean, last year, we cut $2 million. Say next year, we have to cut four. I mean, things just get so bad. Can we actually say we are not going to fund this? We can't. I mean, if we couldn't, and we had to make a decision, roads versus LDFA Smart Zone, I mean, do we have that option? Or how does this bind us?
Well, we're committed to the $200,000 per year. That is something we're committed to. If we aren't going to live up to that, then we're going to be...we're not going to be a satellite Smart Zone. We'll just have to opt out of it altogether. Now, the hope is, you know, initially, and that is something we'll have to deal with, you know, particularly the first year, is how we're going to incorporate that into the budget. But the hope is, in future years, it's...this is an economic development tool, so it's not only meant to create jobs and keep people that are educated in Marquette in Marquette, but it's also to grow the tax base so that, hopefully, in future years, we're going to be bringing in a lot more money than what's being invested. But it's not going to happen the first year.
Okay.
So the first year will be a little bit of a challenge, but after that, it's, hopefully, it'll actually be bringing in more money than what we've invested.
I just wanted to get this out in public because I think the public still has a hard time grasping what we're doing. They see the $200,000. They think, "You're not fixing my street. You're not doing that." And also, just to reaffirm that we can opt out should something happen, even the school formula changes and Smart Zones either find a different way to be funded by the state or they go away. So I just want to make sure that...
Yeah. Yeah, and we did ask several times if...because we're particularly concerned, you know, because the promises, and it's been going on with all the other Smart Zones for, I guess, 15 years now, that the schools have been reimbursed, and our concern was, "Well, what if the state decides they don't want to do that?" And that's when they said that, "Well, you can always opt out of it at that time."
Okay. Thank you for, I guess, going through that with me publicly.
Any other questions? Gary, thank you. As always, it helps to have it explained, and you're very helpful with that.
Thank you. It's my pleasure.
No matter how many times you hear it, you learn something every time. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Call the question. All those in favor of the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Now, there's a time for comments from the commission. Commissioner Kambenzi?
Okay, thank you. I'm going to start off by thanking our presenters tonight, and I'm going to go right into the last motion made by Commissioner Reynolds at our last meeting, which was to have the city attorney look into the FOIA request and review the items and see if there were any violations with state law, local ordinances, or our charter. And he did write back to us to say that there were no violations. I did spend 14 hours of my own time coming in and reading through all of the documents. My observations alone were that there's probably three people whose every email was included in there. That would be the police chief, planning director, and myself. In fact, there were hardly emails, if any emails at all, from the other commissioners. I did notice that. I did find one string of documents of my emails missing, and that was between John Kievel and myself concerning his letter that he submitted in support of the boathouse, as well as finding additional funding for that. So I am going to request that that string of emails of mine gets added to the FOIA document. Upon this, I actually sought out our city clerk and asked how the FOIA was done. And it's my understanding that the IT department pulled the city commissioner emails, but that the staff members, administration, actually went through and did their own FOIA request. So when I actually typed in the keywords from the FOIA that we got, UPCRC, rowing club and boathouse, all of mine came up except for the exchange between John Kievel and myself. With that, I actually asked our city attorney what our policy is, and we do have a commission policy, records retention and disposal policy. And we do follow the Michigan law on this, and so I think it would be good that all commissioners and city staff, administration likewise, get a refresh on this. I think since then, emails become more prevalent. But I would like to make sure that everyone is aware and following that policy. The other thing, when I did a FOIA request, looking at Mike Nyger's Facebook page, I found an email about me. And I think what was in that email summary from him had to do with myself and my family. And so I did request that FOIA. Surprisingly, it was granted in part. It was denied in part, and the reasons were redactions have been made as they pertain to personnel matters, the subject matters deliberative in nature, or are part of issues subject to potential litigation. This email stranded between our previous mayor, Robert Neme, and the city manager had my name in the subject area. I can request through the charter, through the mayor, that this FOIA be released to me. I can also take it to circuit court. However, Mike Nyger was gracious enough to give me the full email thread, and I have that with me here. I'd like to say I'm deeply disappointed, and I would like to publicly say that I'd like to schedule a meeting with the current mayor, Mr. Coyne, to go over these emails. We had a work session before this on the service center in the site selection. I was disappointed that no financials were given, and as we get closer to make the site selection, I guess I have questions, hearing that the hospital project has gone from a $230 million project down to about $170 million. With that, I said, "If the service center is only seven acres and everything else the city owns is to the east of that, why can't we go back to Duke Life Point and see if they actually need our service center? Or if now they would have enough land to build a service center east of there?" I think this would avoid a lot of anger. It's been my interpretation in the community that just because there's brownfield money, community members see this as their state tax dollars. And as you know, our state just announced that they are $350 million in the red. I've always been of the opinion that the memorandum of understanding is a starting point. I know some other commissioners voiced their opinion that we have to stay true to that. But I firmly believe that if DLP did not treat our brownfield TIF agreement as a binding agreement, in fact, they wouldn't agree to sign our TIF documentation chart, who pays what, when, and that. They also switched their liability from their parent organization to just MGH. I think we, as city commissioners, need to come back and say what we need from them because, right now, I feel like it's what they want, and I think we need to balance the community needs and make sure that, first and foremost, we're representing the taxpayers. I think the hospital can do a lot of great things, but I think the taxpayers come first, and I'd like that option to be thought about. Again, I'm not sure if it would be, but I think it's only fair to go to Duke Life Point and ask them to see their current plans, their downsized plans, and see if that would work. On a last note, our community lost one of the biggest arts advocates, Pat Ryan O'Day. Very sad to find out about that last week. She will be missed. For anyone who has read the Marquette Monthly over the last 20, probably 30 years, she was a big part of that, certainly as their CEO and editor-in-chief. So I would just like to say that my heart goes out to her family, and I appreciate so much what she's done for the arts community. Thank you.
Commissioner Frazier?
I'd like to thank the committees who read the presentations, too. I think the staff is on the right track for this city relocation project. Look forward to seeing their numbers when they get them back from the different people that bid on the project so we can get more ideas of how much this is going to cost and everything. So look forward to seeing those numbers from the different people that are bidding on the project. And I think PyPAC is doing a good job trying to go forth with their project. I think it's more about preserving the island, like everybody said, versus telling people what to do to cut down on the litter and stuff like that. I know when I've been out there many times myself, it's disappointing to see all the cigarette buds everywhere, you know, along with litter. I think it's more part, like everybody said, protect the crown jewel than anything else. And all I comment on that, all I have to say is, my daughter is a Girl Scout, and the Girl Scouts are out selling cookies, so buy your cookies from your Girl Scouts. So all I comment on that.
Thank you. Commissioner Campana?
I would take a couple boxes. Lakeview Arena, and I think everybody's aware of this, is in the running for grant money in the Kraft Hockeyville USA competition. If you go online and you write a nice little message about Lakeview Arena and why you like it and what it's meant to you, it counts towards winning this competition. This has to be done by March 18th. And again, if you just Google probably Kraft Hockeyville, you'll find out what you need to do. If it doesn't work, go to our city website. If that doesn't work, call city office. And lastly, you can call us, commissioners. We'll tell you where to go, how to get to it. It would be nice if we could win something. We could win up to $20,000 or more. Top winner gets, I think, $150,000 plus in NHL preseason hockey game. So it'd be nice to see the wings here. Really unusual. Next item, I had the privilege of attending the State of the State address in Lansing. There were a couple tickets, and county commissioner...I went with county commissioner John DePietro, and that's a trip in itself. John knows probably 1,000 people down there, so I got to meet probably most of them. John knows probably 1,000 people down there, so I got to meet probably most of them. Actually, we were with Senator Keevila, got to meet his staff and talk to him, get to know them better. There was, of course, three, four, or five other reps that he introduced us to. I got to talk to Representative Ed McBroom, he's from the Delta Dickinson area. Also there was Northern Michigan University President Fritz Erickson, Gavin Leach, Indiana Hemola. I also got a chance to meet with Jason Allen, who was at one time a first congressional district runner. He is now the, involved in Veterans Affairs for the State of Michigan, and we had a nice long talk, and the guy's really bright, and he has a lot to say for Marquette and UP, and I believe he says he's coming up here for the dog sled races, and, but he had a lot of good things to say, and that there's good projects coming our way, so we hope to see him here. Lastly, I also met with, and this was bumped into him leaving the Capitol, was Keith Craig, who is the head of the DNR. And this guy talked to me longer than anybody about, again, the UP, and, you know, good things coming our way, and he, I believe he will be up here. What I found out was a lot of people there, the dog sled races is a big attraction for them, and I think we'll have a lot of people coming up for that. Lastly, the Warming Center, we should all kind of volunteer to go down there and slop some food. I shouldn't say that. Hand it out. I'm going back to my college days, so. But I will, I'm going to drag my son down there, and I think it'd be nice to volunteer, as always. Thank you.
Commissioner Reynolds?
I particularly haven't felt well since about 6:00, so I'm not going to add anything other than, my friend is a constant supporter of Room at the End, and she's there going church to church, serving food and all that kind of stuff, and last week when we had lunch, she actually made me sign up to do it, so I've already, I'm already golden on that, so that's the only thing I have to add.
Hope you feel better. Commissioner Baldini?
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, the Kamenon Ski Race was here this weekend, and when you begin to go out and walk around the community, when you go out and walk around the community, it's, it is amazing how much money does get spent for things like breakfast. And so it was rather successful, and I think next we have the dog sled race now next month. I was pleased with the presentation on the service center. I know there's a lot of details, but I think it was a legitimate request on their part to get some sense from us, rather than putting cost on all of the five or six sites. And along with Sarah, I'd also like to recognize Pat O'Day. I served with her on a lot of other committees, I think we were more contemporary age-wise, and, but over the years, she was very, very involved with a lot of other activities, other than just the paper, which has been a great addition, not just to the Marquette, but to the central Upper Peninsula. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Connelly?
I'd like to thank the members, the board, and the director, Nikki DeWalt, of the No Kamenon Trail Network for putting on a wonderful event. I understand that they had a record enrollment. A lot of hard work went into it, but a lot of people had a great time. I was able to help out in the last kilometer, and people were smiling then, even after 50K or 49K at that point, because the wind turned and was at their back. So everybody had a great time, and the volunteers, it's fun to volunteer. If you can, think about volunteering next year, there's never too many hands to help out. And I want to thank the NTN for putting on a great event for our community. Not only, it brings guests in, but it's great for the people who live here. A small point, and we brought it up in passing, I would like the commission to consider changing the order of agenda so that we don't make the people who we are grateful for serving on committees having to wait through an hour and a half of baloney, essentially before they get to, sorry, whatever. We don't have to call it that, but they don't have to sit here through the whole process of city commission meetings and public hearings and that. They should be able to be recognized and be able to get out of here.
I have just a couple comments. Thank you for your comments about the Warming Center. I have been there, and it is a spectacular place, and I really hope all of us would go down there one morning and visit and be motivated to work and also to contribute to it, so it's a great community service, and thanks for coming tonight and adding something positive to the comments. Appreciate that. Just a couple other comments. I would hope we could work on changing the agenda, because I think Dr. Connelly, other than the baloney remark, has merit, because I would just comment that it was fun having a discussion and, you know, having civil disagreements with each other and still be able to function with each other. The comment Commissioner Campani made about meeting with me, I'm not, I want to confer with the city attorney, because I don't know that I have any special standing, and I need to know if I do or responsibility. I'm, basically, my prime responsibility is to run the meetings and sign things, and I would, I would like to have him comment at a later time whether that's appropriate or whether the commission should meet as a group to do that, or, and I also would like to know the real purpose of why you want to have this discussion, so I don't understand why. So I'm going to ask the city attorney to talk with me at another time as to what I should do, or whether I should, or whether the whole commission should meet, because I don't know what the agenda is for that. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, too, would like to express my condolences to the O'Day family. They've been friends with my family for quite a long time. Brian graduated me in high school. It's quite a loss, and I know we're going to miss Patchy, who's a very fine lady. I'd also like to express, again, our thanks to the DDA for pushing through without Mana there, as she's worked through her personal issues, and we're glad to see that they're staying on the ball and keeping things moving. I wanted to give folks a kind of a heads up, February's going to continue all of the interesting events that go on in our area. We had a great No Kamenon weekend this past weekend. The first week of February, on the 4th, is going to be the annual city open house. It's going to be the biggest one yet. It's going to have not only the city departments, city committees, the commission, but also many of our local organizations that do so many good things for the community. It's an opportunity for folks to come out and see what their tax dollars are paying for, meet the people who are providing the services, and an opportunity to network and connect and maybe find a way to give back to the community that you didn't know was otherwise available. Following week, we have the UP 200, which is always a spectacular event. We're going to have a lot of people in town, a lot of distinguished visitors, and I encourage everybody to get out and show their support for that activity. This year, the week following the UP 200 is going to be the Downtown Rail Jam. They're going to try a different layout on Front Street to create more excitement with the event and all of the support there, and it'll be an exclusive time slot, so people won't have to manage their time moving back and forth between UP 200 activities and Rail Jam activities. It'll be dedicated exclusively to the Rail Jam. And so the No Kamenon kicks off really the start of all of those interesting festivals and activities and outdoor programs that we all love, and I look forward to hopefully seeing everybody out on the street having fun and enjoying being here in our community. With that, Your Honor, nothing further.
Thank you. We're adjourned. Thank you.